And I will call to order the city council meeting for October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and we will begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Zach, can you do a roll call, please?
Mayor Mongette.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wong.
Here.
Councillor Barnes.
Good evening.
Councillor Friedland.
Here.
Councillor Gallegos.
Good evening.
Councillor Sampson.
Here.
Councillor Tapia Vega.
Here.
Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you. Apologize for the late start tonight. Just wanted to share with the community that unfortunately, because unfortunately, the city faced the passing of one of our city staff members. And so due to that, we will be adjusting our schedule for tonight and postponing certain items. And we will pick up some of these items at a later meeting. That council will vote on decide tonight when to move forward. So just wanted to give you all the background. So I'm going to look to our city attorney here. Some of the items that we do still need to discuss tonight include the budget, because per our charter, that does need to be passed by a certain date. So item M will still be discussed tonight. Proclamation for Indigenous Peoples' Day will be discussed tonight, which is item I. And the executive session, item Q, will occur tonight as well. All other items, and we'll do the consent agenda as well. So items J, K, L, and N, we are seeking to postpone them to a later date.
Okay, Mayor, in order to postpone those items, I would recommend that the council make a motion to postpone the items and list them by the letter on the agenda and that you postpone those items to a regular meeting before the end of the year, subject to notice on an upcoming agenda. So what that will do is allow council to postpone those items to a, it's not quite a date certain, but for sure before the end of the year, so that the public can know if they'd like to be here for one of those items on a future meeting agenda, that they just need to check the meeting agenda to see when those items are rescheduled. But that would give our city manager and council the flexibility to set those agendas as there is room to accommodate those items. So to be clear, Mayor, in summary, I do recommend that council make a motion to postpone these specific items you will list to a regular meeting before the end of the year, subject to notice on those upcoming meeting agendas.
Go ahead.
Are you ready for a motion?
Yep.
I move to postpone items J, K, L, N to a future meeting that will occur prior to the end of two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
All right, motion second for the discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that passes unanimously. Okay, so we do have public input tonight still. However, if you'd like to save your comments for a later meeting, or please feel free to call council or email us. We'll do our best to respond to you. However, you're still, of course, more than welcome to speak tonight if you'd like. So we will begin with Sharon Stetson.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Stetson. My husband Wayne Stetson and I reside at six two six Glenwood Drive here in Lafayette. I am a lifelong resident, and in the nineteen eighties, I served two terms on the city council. I'm here tonight to discuss another problem that we have. We are one of six residents that on Glenwood Drive and Sandler Drive who have experienced sewer backup in our homes on March eighth of this year. At the time of this so-called incident, we found what we thought was groundwater in our furnace room and bathroom. We determined that our sump pump was dry, and that was not where the water entered our home. Like responsible homeowners, we proceeded to clean. We cleaned up the floors and disposed of the water by dumping it in the toilet. We were unaware at the time that two of our nearby neighbors had experienced devastating damage to their basements from sewer backups until a couple days later. On March twelfth, four days later, my husband was taken by ambulance to Boulder Community Hospital. His diagnosis was pneumonia. The cause of the pneumonia was never determined, even though there is extensive testing. The next day, I discovered that the water in our basement was not groundwater, but sewer water. Our neighbors gave me the information to contact the city, and I called explaining my problem. An inspector came out and spent a couple hours investigating my claim. In the meantime, I had called a mitigating company to start cleaning and sanitizing my home. I was on a hard timeline. I had to get my house cleaned and sanitized before my husband, who had compromised health, before he was released from the hospital. Here are the facts. We have lived in our home since nineteen ninety-eight. Until March eighth of this year, we had never experienced any sewer backups in our home. We are of six residents that experienced backups on the same exact day, March eighth. The city of Lafayette denies any responsibility for the thousands of dollars of damage by raw sewage to these six homes or for the suffering and pain caused by this devastating experience. We are asking the council to mitigate this problem, to accept responsibility for the actions of its employees, and to reimburse the families for the damage incurred. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ron Knox.
Mayor and council members, my name is Ron Knox. I live at six thirty-four Glenwood Drive. I have lived in Lafayette for more than twenty-five years and intend to retire here. On March eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, a category three raw sewage had backed up into our home and flooded our finished basement. Our point of six homes affected, and our property sustained extensive damage. When the crews arrived at our home, they told us there that morning they had responded to another call of sewage entering a nearby home. At that location, they discovered manhole four twenty-nine completely obstructed by tree roots and accumulated debris preventing sewage from flowing through the line. That obstruction caused sewage backup into our home and indicates a breakdown in maintenance. Since then, we have requested from the city maintenance policies, clean schedules, root control programs, and inspection logs through public records, core requests. We're informed that no responsive records exist. The absence of these records makes clear that this section of sewer system that serves our property has not been maintained for years. Colorado law is clear, when a city fails to properly operate or maintain its sewer systems, and that negligence causes damage, the normal protections of governmental immunity no longer apply. In other words, when negligence leads to harm, the city is responsible for making it right. The impacts on our family are ongoing. Much of our home remains torn out and unusable. We've been living with exposed walls, concrete floors, and a constant reminder of how much we have lost from this. It's something that no homeowner should have to face. And I'm respectfully asking the council to take action. One, place this issue on the next regular agenda as a specific item for discussion and direction. Two, ask staff to provide a written explanation for absence of inspections, cleaning, and maintenance records for our neighbor's sewer line, and clarify how this lack of documentation occurred. Three, work with affected owners towards a fair and timely resolution of these losses. And to develop and publish a proactive wastewater management plan. Establish regular inspection and cleaning schedules, root control measures, and clear accountability to ensure this never happens again. What happened to us could happen to anyone in Lafayette, any one of you guys. And the city denies liability, saying it's not their fault. I don't know how you can deny liability in something like this. I lost a fifteen thousand square foot, fifteen hundred square foot basement that was fully furnished to nothing. And the city says it's not their fault. I don't understand. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Shelley Knox.
We're going to switch. I'm Karen Raven, may I go next?
Karen, Karen Raven, yeah, come on up, come on up.
All right. Good evening, council members. I'm Karen Raven. My husband Dan in the back, and I own two oh two Sandler Drive, which we rent out. On March eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, which you've heard, the sewage from the city's system backed up into our property. The impact has been very disruptive, stressful, and financially significant, both for our tenants and for us. Our homeowner's policy provided no coverage for a backup that originated in the public system. So we have shouldered substantial costs while trying to understand what went wrong and how to prevent this from happening to others. The city informed us that a root mass and debris had obstructed flow in the manhole in front of our property, sending sewage into our home. Responsibility and its insurance provider, SIRSUP, denied our claim. We submitted core requests and met with staff on May twenty-ninth to understand the maintenance history for our segment and to understand the factors that contributed to the event. The city has not provided any documented evidence of cleaning or inspection in the last eight years for our neighborhood's line. No dates, no work orders, no findings, just no records. Meanwhile, SIRSUP has asserted that the line was cleaned within three years. Those positions appear inconsistent. We understand the city has referenced record gaps. However, the absence of historic records means there is no auditable trail of maintenance, inspection, cleaning, or findings. This makes it impossible to confirm what was done, when it was done, or what was found. This is about systems, policies, and documentation. We were told the city does not have a written sewer operations, maintenance, operations and maintenance program. Without a plan and reliable record-keeping, critical segments can be missed, and dangerous conditions such as root blockage can develop undetected. Adequate programs, documentation, and follow-through are intended to identify and address blockages before failures occur. The lack of records for our segment left no way to verify prioritization or service history. This is in sharp contrast to pure front-range utilities that I contacted. They have written plans. They schedule cleaning by zones on two- or three-year cycles with more frequent service at problem spots. They maintain cleaning inspection records, cleaning and inspection records, and they report annually on the miles they have cleaned. That turns maintenance into a checklist rather than a memory test. City records produced to us via cora, together with staff statements, indicate operational constraints that may have contributed to this event, specifically prolonged staffing vacancies and a period when one of the city's two vacuum jet trucks was described as partially disabled, which the city has admitted slowed routine cleaning. In 2024, our line was scheduled to be cleaned along with the rest of the subdivision. Staff said that our street at the southern edge was missed due to cold weather. Yet records show that between that work stoppage and the March 8th event, inspections continued elsewhere in the city. With adequate staffing, equipment, and follow-through, and reliable records that flagged prior skips, the root blockage could have been identified and removed earlier. And with adequate records, the urgency to prioritize the cleaning or inspection of our line would have been clear. My two requests tonight are simple and constructive. So for council, please direct staff to work with SIRSAP on coverage and relief for the impacted families. A timely, fair resolution would help everyone recover and avoid costly litigation. To protect other residents, commission an independent audit of collection system maintenance and records, and adopt a written operations and maintenance plan that includes citywide cleaning schedules, work order tracking, annual public reporting of miles cleaned, and contingency capacity, that's equipment, staffing, or on-call contractors, so that weather staffing or equipment issues don't derail the schedule. We chose Lafayette because we have family here and we love this community. Please take action so that residents can trust that the system serving their homes is properly maintained, and that when something goes wrong, there's a clear path to a just resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, now we have Shelley Knox.
Good evening, council. My name is Shelley Knox, and I live at 634 Glenwood Drive in Lafayette. On March 8th, 25, a category three sewage flood struck our home after a city-owned manhole became blocked with tree roots and debris, forcing raw sewage into our finished basement. The damage to our property and contents was extensive, life-disrupting, and costly. It has also caused a major financial and personal hardship for my family. We've made every effort to resolve this issue appropriately and respectfully, yet the city has denied responsibility and refused to provide compensation. In their communication, the city and SIRSAP have asserted governmental immunity under the Colorado Governmental Immunity Act, or CGIA. However, as outlined in our formal notice of claim submitted on August 28th, addressed to the city, to SIRSAP, and to all you members of the city council, CGIA does not offer absolute protection. Immunity is waived when, under the law, when injuries arise from a city's negligent operation or maintenance of a sanitation system. This is not merely a policy or a budget issue, it is a legal obligation. The CGIA does not protect, or the CGI, the CGIA does protect cities from certain lawsuits. However, that protection is expressly removed when cities fail to reasonably operate and maintain critical sanitation infrastructure, such as sewer lines or manholes. Colorado courts have repeatedly affirmed that when sewer systems fail due to lack of maintenance, including failure to keep lines clear of tree roots and debris, immunity does not apply. In such cases, homeowners have a legal right to pursue remedies against the city for the harm that it caused. Ultimately, this is an issue of accountability. When public infrastructure fails due to negligence, the responsible entity must act. The City of Lafayette has a clear duty under state law to maintain its sewer infrastructure with reasonable care. When that duty is breached and damage results, as it has in this case, the city is legally obligated to make it right. Immunity is not a shield for negligence. If the city continues to deny this claim, we will have no choice but to pursue legal remedies. This path would divert taxpayer dollars away from solutions and into litigation. In truth, continued denial of this claim will likely cost the city and its residents more in legal fees, court costs, and potential judgments than addressing this matter proactively and responsibly now. Our attorney has already provided the city with the full legal basis and documentation supporting our right to compensation. At this point, we are not seeking conflict, we are seeking resolution. Prompt resolution of this claim would allow the city to avoid unnecessary expense and prolonged legal proceedings, all of which ultimately will come from taxpayer funds. We respectfully urge the city to fulfill its legal obligation and responsibility by acknowledging the circumstances, taking appropriate action, and resolving this matter in good faith to avoid further escalation. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next is Thomas Glenn.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for your time. I'm here again. I was here at the last city council meeting. I want to share a photo that I took on October 8th of this year. And essentially, it's addressing the aircraft noise flying out of Rocky Mountain Airport with the flight training schools. There's five flight training schools out of Rocky Mountain. This has been one of the top issues of the city, I think, that needs to be addressed because it's a global issue. It's not my house. It's the whole city effectively. So what I'm asking for is a call to action of sorts, for the city to essentially come up with plans as far as trying to mitigate the issue. This is a picture of a bald eagle sitting on a power pole at the corner of Spalding and South Vermont Avenue. That same morning, or early afternoon, I witnessed three bald eagles soaring over kind of the heart of the city here. And the flight school aircraft were flying right through them. So we got an issue here, both impacts to people and impacts to wildlife. And we need to be responsible about trying to protect our resources from the natural side as well as the persons in the city. We've got a great city here in terms of a lot of diversity. We've got people with different needs, special needs, different conditions, and so forth. And for me, this year has been horrendous. And what drove that effectively was an FAA memo that was obtained. This was a memo which came out on June 10th of this year. Basically, the FAA rerouted traffic so that it flies out of the Rocky Mountain Airport over Superior in Lewisville. And all the return traffic comes right down to 87 and right through Lafayette, essentially. So everything going through. Now, there's, from 2024, there was about 300,000 takeoff and landings that went through the Rocky Mountain Airport. And all of that traffic is heading north through Boulder County. So how many airplanes per day? I, it's very easy. Hundred, a couple hundred aircraft per day are flying right over the heart of the city, 1,000 feet or less in some cases above the city. And we're suffering all the noise pollution in addition to the leaded fuel that these aircraft, these piston aircraft are using. So it's creating significant harm to the city, the residents, and impacting the quality of life in this city. I'm going crazy. I'm getting aircraft. I can't sit in my backyard because I'm getting, I'm coming over one every few minutes at times. There's some flight tracking, flight tracking software that's out there. You can look. The lines are going, you know, right over the city effectively. Rocky Mountain Airport is the biggest violator, but those aircraft out of Longmont, as well as Erie, they circle around and then they go right through because they're going from one flight school to the other. They go around. And this is also an impact to our open space. Our open space land in Boulder County basically was paid for with taxpayer dollars. And the purpose was basically to have a place to have some peace and nature, enjoy an outing. This is having a huge impact on our open space. So we need to have something formulated. And I know there's been a few discussions between the local towns, Superior, Lewisville, Lafayette, Broomfield, et cetera, to come up with a plan, but we need some concrete plans going forward to be able to tackle the issue. Because basically, our quality of life is taking a huge hit. And is that something that we're going to live with forever? Because the longer that we let aircraft fly through zone, the harder it is to get it changed in the future. So we need to start formulating the plans. I know there's an election, there's going to be a new council turnover. There's going to be uploading whoever's new on the council into the issue. But we need, we need basically everybody to come together and come up with, what are we, what are we going to do here? We can't just sit on it. Because it is seriously hurting our children, our children, our school, disruptions in the day of the school day, as well as sleep issues and other things that affect people in the city.
Thank you, sir. I don't mean to cut you off, but you're out of your time. Thank you. We appreciate your input.
Thank you again, and I'll go ahead and I'll pass this photo on.
Thank you. Next, we have Miranda Fan.
Council members, sorry about the circumstances of this meeting. My name is Miranda Fan, and I'm the current vice chair of the Sustainability and Resilience Board. But I'm speaking today as a Lafayette resident. I'll be direct. The 2026 budget doesn't adequately fund the climate actions we committed to when we adapted the Climate Action Plan last year. Extreme weather isn't a true problem anymore. It's happening now. And this council has the opportunity to shoot the 2026 budget, reflect their urgency by prioritizing community resilience. Here's the data. Colorado has already warmed to 2.3 degrees Fahrenheit since 1980. Heat waves expected to increase up to tenfold while cold waves become less frequent. High fire-risk days have gone from 16 to 116 per year. By 2030, we'll see twice as many drought days and extreme storms. Of course, we know this to be true. Marshall Fire was three years ago, and insurance premiums are up nearly 60% since 2018. We're seeing water stress on municipal supplies, and people are showing up to hospitals with heat-related illnesses. This is the reality we're managing right now. So what needs funding? The Climate Action Plan identifies three community resilience actions, all rated as high impact. First, CR 3.3, Enhanced Emergency Preparedness, improving evacuation routes, communications, and coordination. That's critical infrastructure with a return on investment through reduced emergency bonds costs. Second, CR 3.4, Boulder County Vulnerability Assessment Implementation, which is the ongoing work with floodplain management, hazard mitigation, and coordinated warning systems with police, fire, and county emergency management. And third, and this is related to next month's ballot measure, is CR 3.2, Resilience Hub Development. We have a toolkit from the Center for Climate and Energy Solutions specifically designed for the North Front Range. If the full recreation center renovation doesn't pass, we need at least a modest investment in making that facility serve as an emergency shelter with backup power, water redundancy, and communications. Why is this smart economics? One in four businesses that close because of a disaster never reopen. And if you believe the U.S. Chamber of Commerce and Allstate, for every dollar not invested in wildfire preparedness, communities lose $22 in future economic activity. These aren't discretionary expenses, they're economic protection. I know the budget is tight. Council made a principled decision that reflects the values of many community members to push back on state growth mandates. But that choice came with a cost. We lost access to state grant funding that would have offset exactly these kinds of investments. Grants like Charge Ahead Colorado aren't available to us anymore. We're on our own. So here's my ask. Make CR 3.2, CR 3.3, and CR 3.4 top-tier 2026 budget priorities. Put them in the capital plan and the operational budget as essential infrastructure. If budgeting for these specific cap actions isn't feasible due to resources, timing, or other barriers, consider offering property tax rebates to homeowners for installing fireproofing measures. While this may not seem equitable, think of it as being similar to herd immunity, where neighbors can benefit from measures taken by others nearby. We must change the way we think about climate adaptation from an expense into an investment in community stability. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. All right, I am not seeing any more slips for public comment. I am also not seeing any callers online. So with that, we will close public input. And move forward with the consent agenda. This includes Item A, September 16, 2025, City Council meeting minutes. Item B, September 30, 2025, City Council workshop summary. Item C, second reading of ordinance number 18, Series 2025, repealing Section 65-84 of the Chapter 65 of the Code of Warnesses for Lafayette regarding court costs for failing to comply with motor vehicle insurance requirements for cases solving in dismissal or withdrawal of a charge. Item D, second reading of ordinance number 19, Series 2025, granting utility easements to Public Service Company for Colorado for utility lines related facilities to serve electric vehicles charging stations on certain city-owned properties. Item E, second reading of ordinance number 20, Series 2025, establishing term limits and term lengths and repealing sections of the ordinances of Lafayette relating to boards, commissions, and enacting Article 3, consolidating provisions regarding boards and commissions as amended first reading. Item F, Series Resolution Number 2025-58, approving the disposal, sale, or donation of surplus equipment. Item G, Resolution Number 2025-9, approving and accepting a public access easement agreement and tenant consent for Lot 1, Block 2, Cold Creek Tech Center, filing number 1. And Item H, Resolution Number 2025-60, approving the industrial city addition for Number 2, Replat B, and accepting the dedication of public access easement thereon. Are there any items that councils would like to pull? Hearing none, we'll take a motion, please.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? That passes unanimously. We do have one proclamation tonight. I'll just go ahead and read that in if it's okay with that. The proclamation tonight is in regards to Indigenous Peoples' Day for October 13, 2025. Whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of Native nations to the United Nations International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in America. And whereas a Lafayette city council recognizes that the indigenous peoples have lived and flourished in the Americas since time immemorial. And whereas Colorado encompasses the ancestral homelands of 48 tribes in the Denver metropolitan area, is home to descendants of approximately 100 tribal nations. And whereas the City of Lafayette council recognizes and values the vast contributions made to our community through indigenous peoples' knowledge since philosophy, arts, and culture. And whereas indigenous peoples in our community, as in all parts of America, has endured centuries of cruelty, exploitation, and genocide. And whereas the City of Lafayette fosters inclusivity, racial equity, and justice for all people, and opposes systemic practices that perpetuate the oppression of indigenous peoples. And whereas the City of Lafayette recognizes its shared responsibility to honor our nation's indigenous roots, history, traditions, and cultural contributions. Now therefore, may it be resolved that the mayor and city council of the City of Lafayette formally recognize the interconnectedness of humanity and foundational and cultural contributions of indigenous people to the history of our community and do care by proclaim, October 13, 2025, as Indigenous Peoples' Day. The City of Lafayette will support events that celebrate and honor indigenous peoples, their traditions, culture, and our shared history. So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? That proclamation passes unanimously. That proclamation passes unanimously. Okay. We do have one item under regular business for tonight. This is Item M. Items pertaining to the City of Lafayette 2026 budget. This does include a public hearing for Resolution 2025-62, as well as ordinance, Series 2025, ordinance number 21. We have our city manager here and our CFO here as well to get us started.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'll be presenting on the 2026 recommended budget this evening with Katie Doling, our city manager. I wanted to thank Morgan Walton, the Deputy Finance Director, Sarah Calso, the Human Resources Director, and Lori Heresta, the Senior Budget Analyst, for all their hard work on this budget, as well as the city manager, the deputy city manager, the assistant to the city manager, and all the department heads. The city held a workshop at the end of August on the 2026 budget and provided the 2026 budget book with significant detail to city council and the public in September. This presentation is a high-level overview for adopting the 2026 budget and establishing the mill levy, in addition to first reading to appropriate funds for the operation of the city for fiscal year 2026. So we've got our agenda here. Budget process and philosophy, 2026 recommended budget highlights, next steps, public hearing, and motion language is also attached. Budget process overview, so here's our calendar. We're in October. Again, we had a workshop in August where we presented the proposed budget, or the workshop to start that conversation. And in September, we published the budget book. And we are now at the public hearings on the budget and your opportunity to adopt the budget no later than the last Thursday in October. Budget responsibilities. Municipal charter. The city manager, with assistance of department heads, prepares and submits a balanced annual budget and proposed rates and fees to city council for approval. City council adopts the budget, budget adjustments, and mill levy to the budget. This includes special districts as well. And then city council adopts certain fees. Budget philosophy. A municipal budget reflects council strategic outcomes, community values, services that benefit residents, ensures legal compliance, which includes balanced budget balancing revenues and expenditures, maintains adequate reserves, and is the appropriate use of reserves for one-time expenditures. So we're flexible and forward-thinking under our budget philosophy as well. 2026 budget management priorities. We're looking to optimize existing resources through innovative-based budget utilization and identification of new revenue streams or cost efficiencies. We're looking to maintain a cost-neutral budget framework that prioritizes core and essential services. We prioritize capital investments aligned with strategic objectives and long-term outcomes. We continue strategic plan implementation and competitive compensation practices within sustainable fiscal limits. And we enhance fiscal resilience through proactive contingency planning and risk management. I'm going to hand it over to Katie.
Thank you, and good evening, council. So our 2026 recommended budget, as outlined in your budget book, totals $145 million. About a portion of that goes to the general fund, which is our largest singular fund that funds the majority of your city operations. And then the remaining, almost $92 million, is being budgeted in your dedicated funds, and these are largely your utility enterprise funds. So when you look at that budget, it is supported by about $117 million in revenue. And if you look to the left, this is sorted by funds, so coincidentally, the majority of the budget revenue also supports the budget expenditures. The budget by type, you could see on the right-hand side, and a good majority, especially when you strip out the utility funds, is supported by taxes, both sales tax and property tax. And then those utility fees are solely supported for the utility funds, they can't be used for any other operational purpose. Diving a little bit deeper into sales and use tax, so the 2026 budget is $30.4 million. This does not only support our general fund, but also our dedicated sales tax funds that are our open space funds, our mental health and human services, and our public safety funds. As we've been talking since probably June and maybe even before that, we have seen a softening in our retail sales as we've kind of come out of the spike of the COVID pandemic where we saw large increases. So we are budgeting a modest 2% above our 2025 revised projections, that's for retail sales. There are other components of sales and use tax that include construction use in motor vehicle, and those fluctuate, but we are seeing kind of an increase of 3% over 2025 revised projections. Property tax is estimated to be about $14.3 million, and this is largely in your general fund, but it does support your debt service fund that is funding the Great Outdoors Waterpark GOP bond issue from 2016. So as we, again, have been mentioning for a while, we saw some really strong growth in property tax over the last several years, where, as you know, we have assessment or reassessments every two years, and we saw that increase by almost 28% this last time. And we're only projecting about a 4% increase for next year. So definitely a softening in the market, as well as leveling out of the home values that we've seen. So we also discussed fee updates. So we have been working really diligently to update and make clear kind of our fee policy that'll be brought to you at a later date, so we're going to go kind of status quo for this budget. But we do have revenues that we have a known kind of fee change coming forward on October 28th, so these are largely your enterprise funds. And then, as we were going to note tonight, but we will give you an update at a later date, we are continuing the work with our Recreation Parks and Golf Feast Study, and a placeholder has been included into that budget. And then similarly, after this budget's adopted, we're going to look to clean up the code just to really provide clarity around how certain fees are adopted, how they're updated, and where they're located in the code. They are located all over the place. And so similar to what we did with boards and commissions, we're going to kind of take them out of the individual pieces and put them into one section, so everyone can kind of see that transparently. Utility rates and fees, so as a reminder, we have three enterprises, utility enterprises, water, water reclamation, and stormwater utilities. They are separate from the general fund, and the rates do need to go to support the expenses of that fund. And as we presented in August, we had Raftellus Financial Consultants complete that, complete utility rate study. And as part of it, it developed updated financial plans, projected expenses including operating capital and debt. We've discussed that, you know, cost for these capital projects has increased exponentially even since the last time that we've done these studies, due to the length and time that they're taking in litigation that's occurring in a lot of these projects. And so they presented their findings to council, and, you know, what's a little bit challenging with these pieces is that it really, you know, the impact that it has is really going to be customer-specific based upon your usage. And so your outdoor, essential outdoor use, which is those lower-tier rates, will have lower monthly increases. And then obviously, if you're a consumer that has large outdoor radiation or spends a lot of water outside, those are at your higher tier and do cost more money. Shifting over to the expenditures overview, so by fund, you could see the general fund is the largest fund, but those utility funds that are in kind of the long green and off to the left, water reclamation, do sort of a large portion of the budget, and that's mainly because of the large capitals that are within each fund. Our budget by type, you know, kind of the personnel and operating, day-to-day, kind of keep the lights on, keep the people in their seats, is the large portion of it. And we're going to walk through the final part of this presentation, kind of highlighting certain areas in the personnel budget that are changing, highlight some operating requests, and then end on capital improvement requests before we turn over to questions in a public hearing. So 2026, we have been working over the past several years to develop our several kind of compensation plan and philosophy, which was adopted last year. And so we're really committed to continually align and evaluate with your communities where we want to be in the market. And so we're projecting an average of 3% increase for city employees based upon a merit system ranking. And then we do have two collective bargaining groups that we've talked in the past that we are close to finalization with, and so those employees are represented by that agreement and dictated by that agreement. Healthcare, as I'm sure you all see in your day-to-day lives, is continuing to be a challenge as far as our cost escalation that we see. So as a reminder, this pays 100% paid health dental envisioned for all employees, all types. It's very unique, but it's something that's of great value to our employees. But we have seen our healthcare insurance increase almost 10%. The revenue was almost double digits again last year. And dental insurance increased over 15%. So we really, we continue to be committed in the 100% for 2026, but as we see rising healthcare increases, we definitely want to have a frank conversation with our employees about what that looks like in the future. But for next year, it is status quo. So looking at positions, they are very limited. The first one is, would be funded through Dr. Cog's Sustainability Grant for building energy code compliance. So it has the name "sustainability" in it, it's really focusing on climate pollution emissions through policy changes. So this position would be supported in the planning and building department. And we have applied for it, and we have reason, no reason to believe that we won't get this. This is not part of the state funding grants that are up in Air Force at this point in time, it is through Dr. Cog. Should we not receive this grant for any reason, we would not move forward with this position. We also are recommending a part-time court clerk position to move to full-time. Currently, we have two and a half FTE, but we've seen a significant increase in the number of just citations in court cases, almost a 50% increase from 2024. And they're just more complex. And so we really want to not only address the current cases, but become more proactive in responding to kind of the customer experience and case management philosophy. So this increases the court staff to three full-time staff. And then also looking through the dedicated fund to add a part-time open space programming and outreach position. So as you know, last year, we began exploring how to diversify our offerings in open space programming and shifting from kind of that single contractor to a variety of contracts and increasing volunteerism. And so we've had nearly 40 new open space volunteers. And so this part-time educated position would really help support and coordinate the new kind of nature of our education programs within the open space. The 2026 operating budget reflects kind of our conservative efforts. So I think I mentioned in August, we've done a lot of work over the past several years at focusing on revenues, finding new ways to enhance our revenues. And so this is the first step that we're really shifting to look at our operating expenditures. So we took kind of a high-level, more work will be done, but high-level review to determine if our budgeted funds were necessary. So we looked at kind of budget to actual, looking through trends as we've shifted different ways that we've done business. And we did try to repurpose existing funding to reduce the net budget increase. So for example, our Humane Society contract has increased significantly. You don't see that before you because we were able to absorb it in here, but what you do see is dispatch because that was above and beyond what we could absorb. So we really have tried to, between the rising healthcare costs and some of our contracts, like, you know, increase those where we can and then ask for additional funding where we felt like we just didn't have that capacity. So the first one that we wanted to highlight, again, within the court system, is a court case management system. So many of you are familiar that we have been incrementally updating our technology to best practices. We recently implemented HRIS program. We will be looking in the future for a financial system, but right now, we feel like the court case management system is the area that we need to focus, focus more to really transition to a paperless processing system. Not unlike our other systems that we have updated, it is outdated and doesn't allow for any document management or paperless case processing. And so it can lead to process errors or difficult tracking. And so with a modernized process, we'll be able to meet kind of the evolving needs of our community members. And it's really a critical component for the court's plans for advancements. The next thing that we are looking to add is library RFID tags. So these are circulating materials. It really helps support modernization of the libraries. So these are the ability to track where the book is, so allows for easier check-in and checkout. You can streamline the materials. But I think more importantly, we've talked a little bit about, you know, making sure that we're still planning for the future. This really allows us to start to explore other product offerings, like vending machine devices or mobile libraries, so that, you know, we don't necessarily need another full-on library, but really getting out into the community, and that would be the first step to being allowed, allowing us to explore that. As best practice, we are also recommending continued network and computer replacements. We are looking next year to probably explore something that we did similar to the Fleet Fund, where this becomes an internal service and departments just contribute to it every year, but for now, this largely comes out of the general fund. And then, like I mentioned, just a lot of different contract increases. We've seen, you know, our EMS, our dispatch I just mentioned, different appointed, you know, security or court councils. We also do, similar to what the community experiences, have to pay for any increases in water. So whether that be at the golf course or our parks, you know, we do pay for those types of increases as we're also passing them along, so. And then just those general inflationary kind of pressures. Within your dedicated funds, again, the big, big thing here is really the inflation. So parks, open space, and trails, we see a lot in the equipment, the, you know, oil and gas, the water there. The legacy water fund, we've talked a few times about how the Thomas Farm Water subsidy, as we put the full burden of the water cost on that operations, it is not sustainable from a small business. And so we have been making conscious choices to subsidize it as we look towards a longer-term strategy for that. And then the Conservation Trust Fund is money funded from lottery proceeds, and typically we spend this on capital, and you'll see a large slide with capital, but we can also spend it on operations. And so we have also moved some funding for watering our system to the Conservation Trust Fund specifically for our parks, which is in alignment with their rules and regulations. So shifting to capital, again, it remains a high priority. We've been trying to actively plan in the past several years for more capital repair and replacements, and so we have kind of several items for you to consider in this year's budget that stem from a lot of our plans. So the first one starts from our multimodal transportation implementation plan. So in recent years, we've really been focusing on your large capital improvement projects related to multimodal. This includes Public Road, which was finished right before I got here, South Boulder Road and 120th, and Colorado Highway 7 and 119th. And so as we've had money shifted to large projects, we have fallen behind on some of our just annual programs. And so this is the first year where we're able to really take that money that we've spent on larger projects and reinvest it in just our general rehabilitation. So we're proposing almost $6 million for kind of that whole multimodal suite. This includes an additional 2.6 on top of the already 2.6 program for street rehabilitation. Also really focusing on transportation safety improvements that stemmed out of our Vision Zero Plan and multimodal transportation plan, traffic signal repairs, which I'll hit on in a minute, and some sidewalk replacement funds. So I think what's really important to note is that, one, we're why we're focusing on kind of the top priorities identified in the MMTP. When we go and try to replace something, we don't do it like-for-like, we're really trying to integrate those safety improvements. And so I shared on Friday, this is an area at Minotaur and South Boulder Road that we just did, but an example of what we will be doing in the future as well, where when we replace this pole, which hopefully you can see the front is the not great one, the back is the new one, we'll be taking down that front one here shortly. But we didn't just replace a light pole, we added detection of bicycles waiting at the signal, because this is right around a lot of the schools, and so that will help them better stand there. Flashing yellow arrows instead of just a green arrow and you hope to turn when no one's coming, so this is very much a safety improvement. We'll be adding retroreflective back plates on the new signal and then replacing the sidewalk ramps to meet current federal ADA standards. So when we talk about like a project, it's much more than just that kind of isolated thing we're really trying to, because it's much more cost-effective to do it at that time, do it when we're in there. The other example that we've been hearing about and was kind of highlighted in the MMTP and our Vision Zero Action Plan is this roundabout at Casper Drive in Saratoga. So this is another example of a priority project that we are hoping to address in the near future. But really, what we were going to do is, it doesn't necessarily rise the roundabout to kind of that high-level replacement, but the pavement does. And so when we go in there and kind of do the pavement, we can, for a much more cost-effective thing, do address this roundabout that, as you, I'm sure, have heard through our community, because if you remember going on the tour, the ones near Willoughby Corner were much more tighter and allowed for those costings. This one's a very large one, and so it doesn't really, people think roundabouts will stop the speed, it actually doesn't do that. And so there's a lot of misconceptions about the safety of it as far as just not being intended to reduce speed. So when we go to do the pavement, we will look towards doing the kind of ADA compliance where you put the middle barriers on each of those spokes and then widen the actual kind of surface to make the roads narrow so people actually do slow down. So again, just another example of where some of this funding would be included and how we would address kind of broader issues, even though we initially went in there for the pavement. Shifting to the utilities capital and the water fund, we've talked about some major capital projects, and some of the highlights that occur in the 2026 budget include replacement to equipment at the existing baseline. to equipment at the existing baseline water treatment plant. We have had several conversations about this, the need to start to plan for a new water treatment plant. So looking towards the property acquisition and design of this water treatment plant for kind of current, but also future needs. Looking to include a utility planning study to kind of update our long-term infrastructure needs. And then money to begin a multi-year project to improve drainage issues along Emma Street and the stormwater system. In the public safety fund, within fire, if you were on the tour, we were able to kind of get to see some of the opportunities and constraints of our current Fire Station One. And so we are looking to at least begin design and planning for it so that we could better understand what a total cost could be in the future. The nice thing about this opportunity is that based upon how the fire station is laid out in different vacant areas, this can be a completely feasible project once we have more of a plan to address some of the spacing needs. Again, this was built when we had a volunteer fire department. And now that we have a 24/7 professional, it just doesn't meet the current needs of our operations. But we will be learning more through the exploration of the design. And then looking to replace rifles that were actually manufactured in 1967 that we received from the US government, but we got them in 2015. So they are sort of beyond their useful lifespan, but the technology has also dramatically improved since 1967, as you can imagine. So rifles these days can be much more fitted to our varying and diverse kind of size and demeanor of our current police force. And this would be funded out of the public safety fund. In Conservation Trust, so again, those lottery dollar monies, looking to continue our playground replacement program. Our paddle boats at the Wanaka Lake paddle boat have been frequently out of service, so looking to incrementally, I believe, next year, replace two of those. Our Festival Plaza shade sales are the original. And so if you drive by there, we have a beautiful new starkey building and some pretty faded-out shade structures. And then do several waterpark improvements to the original Lamontos pool that was not included in the 2016 bond. For golf, we need to start to plan for kind of our raw waterline. They've experienced several leaks and breaks, and it's again, the original irrigation system. So looking to plan for replacement of that. And then just some, you know, several large equipment replacements that are at the end of its useful life. And then citywide, we, if you can see on the right-hand side, we own and maintain a lot of buildings. And so we're looking for boiler replacements at the library and police, citywide kind of door controls, fire monitoring. In the last several years, we've really come up with a rotating parking lot repairs so they don't get to the point where they're completely deteriorated. A few years ago, we also started a generator replacement or even addition to certain facilities that didn't have generators, as we've seen kind of our power outage has become more sporadic and at longer lengths of term. And then LED conversion, light conversions in various facilities. So just kind of to summarize, and then I'll open it up. I know I've been talking for a while. We have seen a lot of rising costs. We've really tried to hone in on some of our budget expenditures. And with our new CFO onboard, anticipate doing a much more robust dive into next year. And then really trying to maintain that progress along our various plans and capital needs. So with that, you will have your second opportunity in adoption consideration on the budget on October 28. This will also be where you adopt your fees, your pay plans, and then bear with us, do your motions for your general improvement, all four general improvement districts that are including public hearings with those. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions, and then we can open it up for public hearing. And I, I mean, everyone behind me.
Thank you. Thank you to staff, everyone for putting that presentation together. I know budget's one of the, the largest thing we handle as a city. So thank you for time and energy on that. I personally do have a couple of questions, but I will email those to you and get you those plenty ahead of time before our second reading. But does anyone else on council have any questions about what's been discussed so far? Counselor Sampson?
These are about funds, water reclamation funds. I noticed that in the information we're getting, we've got actuals from 2023. We got a revised, I think, budget from 2024, and then we have a bit from 2025. And it looks like 2026 budget is done 2025 budget. Do we have any mid-year actuals on the water fund or the water?
I want to be sure we're looking at the same things. Let me pull up my fund financials.
Just going to say, yeah, for us, it's page 37 and 59.
You're saying water reclamation looks the same?
Water fund and water reclamation fund. I'm looking at it, and it looks like, so we, the table shows, like I said, 2023 actuals, 2024 revised, then we have a budget for 25, and then 2026 is sort of this forecast. I'm thinking that's what we're looking at for our budget, right? And so I was trying to figure out if there's any actuals, even a mid-year or something, that are later than 2023.
Yeah. So I'm wondering, you don't have a book. Sounds like a 2025 budget where we would show 23.
Okay. Could be. This is what I printed off of the internet, the website.
Let me confirm as soon as I'm ready.
Okay, that's fine.
Yes.
That's fine.
Other, other questions? Counselor?
I always appreciate how conservative you are in working on this, right? Planning for, not the worst probably, but like, for, you know, how realistically things go to the lower bound and then, you know, hoping for, right, 2% increase sales tax, 3% increase in use tax, 4% in property tax. I'm not an economist, but I don't know. It feels, it feels not, it feels aggressive. Not aggressive, but it feels, I'm not sure what the, is what I'm saying to you.
I don't know. So I will say that the property tax is based on assessors, and we do have preliminary information. So they, they are the economists in a sense, and so I'm going to trust they have been pretty spot on. A lot of it depends between this time and, you know, we'll get the final, is those that, what's the right word, the protests are kind of theirs and whether that'll, where that'll land. So I'm confident with that. You know, the state, when we were going into this, because we also watched the state OMBs, the Office of Management and Budget, we watched the state legislature, you know, at the time when we were developing this, was actually like 1.5, 1.75 for sales tax. And we have outpaced their growth when we've done it. So we increased it, you know, a little bit above that. But it, yeah, right now, it is very challenging. And I think that's like when CFO Balzer was trying to, you know, emphasize it flexible is like, should we start to see next year, we see an increase, like, we can always come back to council and talk about are there other priorities that maybe aren't included in this, but we want to include? Or similarly, do we need to pull back on programs or projects because it's actually gotten worse? And so.
Yeah. How much, how much like space, I guess, do we have for, in that going down? I guess, in another way to my question, if we were not at 2% and 3%, but instead at 0% and 1%, we wouldn't have to change things, or would we?
We want to have, I would want to have a year, everyone's agreement on council, conversation about what, how comfortable we are using our fund balance, right? Because that doesn't replenish at the same rate that it would. So once it, once it's at a certain point, right, you have to have pretty substantial growth to build back up. And so it would be about the trade-offs conversation.
Yep. Okay. I have a few other like detailed questions that I'll probably send after this. I do want to bring up the resiliency elements that were brought up earlier today, and I'm sure will be brought up again during public hearing. You know, I think, you know, I saw a couple of things in there around at least efficiency, right? The boilers. I'm curious, right, are we pursuing the highest level of efficiency we can there? Generators as well, what's our thinking there? But that's more sustainability-focused things. And I think, you know, and maybe it's a longer conversation, a future conversation around what does resiliency look like and how does it fit into the budget? But I'm curious if you have any thoughts around, are there resiliency elements already baked into our budget? And, you know, or are there elements that are a fair point that we should consider figuring out how to get them in?
Yeah, I think it's probably a little bit of both. You know, when you speak towards the things that are in there as well, I think a lot of it has to do with the current capacity of the buildings and what you can and cannot do based upon what's, you know, the most efficient or not. So we always evaluate that. I think that there's a fair point to be said about the Recreation Center and TBD, because we, you know, there's a lot of opportunities one way or the other of reprioritizing existing dollars if we don't pursue it, if the bond doesn't pass. If it does, you know, looking to how do we integrate in that piece of it as well. You know, I certainly can provide more information if I am recalling the, the other two priority areas, I believe was around, it seemed to be a little bit more around fire protection. I apologize, I don't have it in front of me, but I can, I can speak a little bit more towards what our sustainability and fire department are doing in those areas to respond to those two pieces. So while it may not be hard dollars as far as equipment pieces, it's mainly staff and exploration time. And coordination with the county as well. A lot of that has to do with county of disaster management, too.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think the big one here is resilience hubs, right? In terms of a capital dollar in the budget dollars. And it definitely, you know, a lot hinges on, as we're redesigning the rec center, if we do, you know, how do we keep that in mind? Which I know we were already thinking about those things, sustainability certainly. But do we function that as a resilience hub or not? And do we do it as such, once we know what we're doing? So.
Yeah. And I believe that the Sustainability Resilience Advisory Board is going to be having an update on the exploration of resilience hubs at the November meeting as well. So whatever kind of stems out from there.
Great. Thank you. Just quick questions, just to make sure I'm understanding, too. So like the golf work, that all comes out of the golf fund, right? It's all internalized?
Yep. So no general fund dollars will be spent. It's all through user fees and those patrons that visit the golf course.
Is it the same for the water park?
No, the water park is a general fund asset, actually. And so it is being prioritized. And that's why you'll see a lot of those Conservation Trust lottery funding helping support that.
Thank you so much. All my questions, Mayor.
Thank you. Other questions from council? Counselor Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question, but there's one more system we need in place. And I think you said that was the finance system, once we get the.
Our financial software system is significantly out of date, and so that would be a large undertaking. So yes, that would probably, I mean, there's, there's a lot of systems that we need to incrementally. But as far as a cost-wise, that would be probably next significant one.
Thank you.
Just one question. I want to get some clarity on right now, because I know topic of many municipal governments right now is all about budgets. And those services that we are purchasing from other municipal governments, i.e. county dispatch, emergency services, those types of fees and services, and how much of an increase are we seeing from other government entities that are passing those costs down the line?
I'd be able to speak towards with dispatch. I know, while I put you on the spot, but I will kind of cover a few extra words. Or if someone else has it, appreciate that piece of it. But I know we have had several conversations with different agencies about them, their desire to pass on costs in the future. And we've kind of told them, look, our budget was already set, and this would have been good to start conversations sooner than that. So I do anticipate in the coming years, we're going to see more come through Office of Disaster Management, through dispatch, through the sheriff's office. And I think it's going to need to be kind of a county-wide conversation we have about level of support and, you know, what taxpayers are paying for or not currently versus what they need to be increasing towards. But does anyone have dispatch?
If not, it could be answered at later.
We will answer it on the 28th.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Okay. Doesn't seem like I'm seeing any more questions from council.
And I, I will say, I do very much appreciate you guys holding some. But if there are any that would substantially change the appropriation, I would like to answer them tonight so that we don't need to make adjustments and go to second reading on the 28th to meet our legal compliance. So we're here for it. But if by and large, the numbers are ready, you just need clarity, then I'm happy to answer them via email or at the 28th.
I mean, my only question is the, is the revenue numbers and making sure we feel really, really good about those, because I know we can, we can adjust for sure. But I just feel like in times of uncertainty, making sure you have baked in room for wiggle without causing disruption to programs, disruption to staffing, God forbid. It's just, you know, I mean, we look at what's happening around us in other jurisdictions, and it is not fun whatsoever. And so I just want to make sure we're being, right now, overly conservative, which I, I believe we already are, right? Just, just making sure. So that's the only, and I, I trust you, I thank you for the answer. It was a great answer. That's the only big piece for me.
I feel like we're being appropriately conservative. You know, the other agencies that we talked to, you know, several of them relied on federal grants, for example. And so we're just in different situations. A lot of them were heavily tourists that, you know, or not even tourists, but heavily, as people left the office and aren't coming in as much, their restaurants are declining. So it is a little bit different. It is certainly like we keep in close communication. You know, I started my career during 2000, 2009 downturn, and then we had COVID, and then we had the flood. So like, we're used to pivoting a lot. But it is hard to predict in a very uncertain time. But I do believe, you know, staff, and I will give credit to Sarah Colso, who did a lion's work of kind of revenue projections based upon prior work of CFOs.
Thank you. All right. So this is a public hearing. So if members of the public would like to speak regarding this item, this would be the appropriate time. You'll have five minutes to speak. You may come to the podium when I call your name. First, we have Miranda Fan.
Again, Mayor, council members, my name is Miranda Fan, and I'll make this brief. As I spoke earlier, the 2026 budget doesn't adequately fund the climate actions we committed to when we adopted the Climate Action Plan last year. Extreme weather isn't a future problem anymore. It's happening now. And this council has the opportunity to shape the 2026 budget to reflect that urgency by prioritizing community resilience. The Climate Action Plan identifies three community resilience actions, all rated as high impact. First, CR 3.3, enhanced emergency preparedness, so improving evacuation routes, communications, and coordination. That's critical infrastructure with a return on investment through reduced emergency response costs. Second, CR 3.4, Boulder County Vulnerability Assessment Implementation, which is the ongoing work with floodplain management, hazard mitigation, and coordinated warning systems with police, fire, and county emergency management. And third is CR 3.2, resilience hub development. If the full Recreation Center renovation doesn't pass, we need at least a modest investment in making that facility serve as an emergency shelter with backup power, water redundancy, and communications. As a reminder, one in four businesses that close because of a disaster never reopen. And for every dollar not invested in wildfire preparedness, communities lose $22 in future economic activity. These aren't discretionary expenses. They're economic protection. In summary, make CR 3.2, CR 3.3, and CR 3.4 top-tier 2026 budget priorities. Put them in the capital plan and the operational budget as essential infrastructure. If budgeting for these specific cap actions isn't feasible due to resources, timing, and other barriers, consider offering property tax rebates to homeowners for installing fireproofing measures. We must change the way we think about climate adaptation from an expense into an investment in community stability. Once again, thank you for your service.
Thank you. All right. I'm not seeing any more speaker forums regarding this topic. Are there any other members of the public that would just speak? Go on up. Next up, we have Adam Gionola.
Hi, Adam Gionola, 311 North Cherrywood Drive. Thank you, Councilor Friedland, for raising the issue of the boilers. You know, I know we're looking at not a like-for-like replacement on the, the traffic systems. And I hope that we're also not looking at a like-for-like replacement on the boilers. These are big energy consumers. We have an opportunity to make significant action by kind of doing a more efficient unit. At the very least, I think we should undergo a lifecycle cost assessment for these units to evaluate if there are alternatives that, over the long term, can save money and reduce emissions. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Any other speakers? All right. I'm also not seeing any callers online. So with that, we will close public input for this hearing and move forward with discussion, possibly a motion from council. So.
Motion language, and happy to answer anything else.
Any final questions or items to discuss, comments to make on this item? If not, we'll take a motion if someone feels ready.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2025-62, adopting the 2026 budget and establishing the Mill voting.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Are there any opposed? None opposed, that passes unanimously, so thank you. All right, we have, we'll conclude tonight with a.
You have one more motion.
Oh, I haven't, I apologize, yeah, for the ordinance as well. Can we have a motion on the ordinance, please?
I move to approve on first reading, Ordinance Number 21, Series 2025, appropriating funds for the operation of the city for the fiscal year of 2026.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, so we'll conclude tonight with staff reports, and then council does have an executive session, beginning with the city attorney's report.
Thank you, Mayor, I do not have anything to report this evening.
Thank you, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, I do have something, but it is in your packet, and feel free to ask me any questions after we leave.
Thank you so much. As far as council reports go, I think we'll do things a little bit differently tonight. Is there, I'll just ask if anyone on council has any comments that they would like to bring up during this time? Counselor Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor, just wanted to mention the downtown development authority meeting on Thursday, we'll be looking at initiatives, we have a draft of a grant program for local businesses in culture and community practice that's coming up on the.
Thank you. Any other items that members of council would like to bring up during this time? Okay. Not hearing any, so I will actually make a motion to move to adjourn to executive session pursuant to call our revised statutes, Section 24-402, 4 F1, to discuss person matters pertaining to the city manager's performance evaluation. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion, second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that passes unanimously. The city council adjourned to executive session or will not return to an open meeting. The time is now 6:52 PM. Thank you.